Good morning, Council. I call the work session meeting agenda for December 11th, 2012 to order. The first request is to revise the agenda to discuss on council on discussed council appointment and alternate appointment to the Mako Legislative Committee. The deadline to submit names is December 14th. You have in your packet, this came to me late Friday afternoon, you have in your packet information from Mako, and I highlighted a charter county with a separate executive branch. You may have two members and alternates if the executive in council do not agree on a single selection, however, the subdivision still has only one vote. And I've provided you with a list of other memberships from the other counties across the state. So that is begging for discussion if you're willing to discuss this item this morning.
I would move that we can open it until we have the third council person.
Well, I'll suggest, and I read this twice, you know, I think I understand. Since Terry Moore, the county executive, was the legislator, the ason for Cecil County previously, I would suggest that we continue to allow her to do that as the executive and give her that nomination.
Well, I'm with Alan. I'm fine if we want to put this over until the fifth person comes on board and we can discuss it then with the other appointments. I think that's what we decided to do last week anyway.
I think it's important that we have a representative on the legislative side. Extremely important.
We already do. We have you.
No.
Are you not on it?
Not at all.
No, it was the--
It's reset every two years.
Yes.
Vicky, do you know, is there a meeting between now and January 15th, January 30th?
You have a meeting on December the 18th, then you have a break, December 25th is Christmas, and January 1st is a Tuesday, so you have a two-week break. So your next meeting would be January Tuesday would be your next meeting, and your next evening meeting is January 15th.
The issue, there hasn't been hardly any prefiled bills, and the legislative session doesn't begin until January 9th.
Correct.
So I don't see any immediacy to the appointment if we want to postpone it until a later time.
Well, I do know that there's a number of initiatives we're going to take on at the state level regarding the whip, TMDL. It's good that we have the rural county coalition recognized by Mako. I do serve on that. I'm the appointee to that. I have a number of things that I'm representing already, so I'm not sure if I can represent Mako as well, but I think it's important.
Well, you're not representing Mako. What you're doing is representing Cecil County at Mako. And when they have issues on whether or not to take a position on a bill, they want to know from each, every county on whether they want to take an issue on a bill.
Unfamiliar with the process, and that's why it's so important that we do have representation. Strong--
Now, when you say--
--in this whole time period, it's interrupting, that we have strong representation. And what happened with the last SB 236, we need to make sure that doesn't happen again, that we have better communication with our directors on impacts on these bills, on the bills before they are finalized, voted on, that we can bring our concerns to the floor and do what we can to have them addressed. So it's imperative, not just on the executive side, but on the legislative side. Remember, this is what charter is all about, separation and balance of power.
Okay, so the consensus is to pass and wait until we have five members?
No, I noticed that December 15th, there is a meeting.
You have a meeting next Tuesday?
Yeah.
And then you're back, January 1st, January is your next meeting after August.
So that is with the work session and legislative day?
No, it's just the work session.
Okay, what time is that meeting?
Your work session started on May 1st.
No, sorry, the Mako.
The Mako. Their Mako's bylaws require for subdivision to nominate an elected official for committee membership. These nominees are officially collected during the business meeting at the annual winner conference that is scheduled this year for Thursday, January 3rd, 2013. So that's the timeline for Mako.
Okay, I think we can wait a little while before we appoint on the legislative side.
Okay, so we're just going to hold this? Is that the consensus?
I think we're all agreed.
Okay. Very good. That was the reason for bringing it forward was because of Mako's. The next discussion process for considering appointment to District 2, Council seat, Councilman Hodge.
As we all know by now, the process for selecting a replacement for District 2's council seat has changed, and the new process, as I see it, is that the current council city members, the four of us sitting at this table, have the obligation and responsibility to try to identify the most qualified council member that would replace Terry Moore's seat. And we should take action to make that happen, and I would encourage us to promote that open seat and ask the community and ask those that qualify in that district, District 2, and have lived there for more than six months, to come forward and express their interest in the position. And then we should potentially evaluate and interview them and make a selection from those choices. And that does not preclude the Republican Central Committee from coming forward and making their recommendations also. I have no problem with them weighing in on the matter and who they support. But we, the council members, are now responsible for that choice, and we can choose from their list or we can choose from all the available applicants that come forward.
Vicky, I thought we had a contract with Norman Wilson. It's still in place?
Okay, we're on discussion item number one on the agenda. It has to do with replacing--
I was actually going to ask our attorney a question related to that, but he's not here.
Are you questioning the validity of us selecting the vacancy?
Yes, I've gotten a number of complaints from the public about the last-minute switch of Miss Moore and questioning the process. I wanted to ask Norman Wilson his professional input on any recourse that we might have available.
Well, I think the charter is very perfectly clear on the matter, and I don't think there's any discretion that the people that may feel that they can slight it, but they can't say that it's illegal or wrong to move forward in the way that I've just proposed.
Are you an attorney, Mr. Hodge?
No. But I have to warn the council, the time is of the essence, and if we don't take action and if we drag, repeat, and we don't do anything, then we'll lose control. We won't have any ability to select the candidate for replacing District 2's seat. Terry Moore will have absolute power to do that, and so we can do nothing and then allow Terry Moore to make that selection. Or we can take the action ourselves and we can control our own destiny here.
I was reading a publication that her intention of switching is directly related to having power by the legislative--
Well, then take that power from her and let's make that choice ourselves. She has no power. She has no ability to select any candidate of any party affiliation unless we don't do it by January 3rd. So if you want to drag, repeat, and not do anything, then you're advocating that it's okay for her to go ahead and move forward with this?
No, I just want an opinion--
Well, where have you been for the last two weeks?
Oh, I've been checking--
This is not new. This is not new. This is something that happened several weeks ago.
Yes, and I have been checking into it, and depending on who you talk to, the language that's in our charter is typically not found, that it's the majority of time that that person is within a party that is recognized, that this is definitely an exception to the rule.
Sure, I would agree with that. I would also like to have a written opinion from council as to what procedure we should follow here. I mean, to me, this whole thing is a farce. I mean, from what I've heard, the decision's already been made, but I would like to see what procedure the charter lays out once this situation comes into play. So I would agree with that.
The decision cannot be made because we have control. We make that decision. So how can you say the decision has been made when we make the decision? That doesn't make sense at all.
I just read the newspaper.
I don't think, I never read the paper that the decision's been made, and I've never heard of it, and I doubt that it has, and--
Well, first of all, before we get into this business with the written opinion, last week, and I want to reiterate this this week, I want the county executive to come down here before us, now that we apparently are tasked with this responsibility, and explain her actions here. Why did she go about doing this? I mean, I, like I said, I've read the papers, and I haven't seen anything to my satisfaction to explain why she undertook this a few weeks after the election in which she ran as a Republican. She didn't bother to inform the Central Committee, which had already went ahead and had interviews and taken applications. So I want her ear across from us, and I want to hear her explanation for why she did what she did. That's first and foremost. Second of all, I would like to get an opinion from Norman Wilson about what procedure do we follow here? How many names do we take? How many names do we put up? We don't know. The charter's entirely silent on that, so--
I think that when the law is silent, then it's our obligation to put a process in place, and we can self-determine that process right here, right now.
Mr. Hodge, you're not an attorney, and we certainly need an attorney to weigh in on this, make sure we do it right. And I agree with Councilman Dunn that I would like to have--
Yeah.
But I'll hold on a minute. No more interrupting. Just let me finish talking, and then you can speak. Councilman or county executive Moore does need to come down here and explain her actions. You know, we're reading this in the newspaper. I'd like to hear it from her to explain why did she do this? You know, the Republican Central Committee is tasked with the express purpose of filling vacancies. That's why they were elected. That's their task in being elected by the public. So that was taken away from that, just in a minor technicality, which we need to get clarification on. Is it just a technicality?
If you were here during this swearing-in, you would have heard Terry flat-out explain why she was doing what she did and why she did it. And then, as far as I know, that her speech was verbatim in the Cecil Guardian, so it's right out in the hallway. If you just want to walk across the hall, pick it up and read it, I think her entire speech is listed there, word for word. And now you give Alan the chance.
Well, that is exactly what I was wanting to say. You come to the meeting at approximately 12:15 on December 3rd. She gave a full explanation to everyone in this room why she did what she did.
Yeah.
I don't think that you are deserving of any personal face-to-face meeting with her and she refuses not to do it. Number two, the charter clearly states what's to happen in the event we have this situation. Why didn't you read the charter?
He said I didn't read the charter.
I'm saying, why is it this problem if you know the charter? Charter says that the Republican Central Committee will present three people, two to replace the candidate's position. She's unaffiliated. We have an open forum right now. We addressed this the other night, and you refuse to talk about it. I do not think that this belabor is a lot more--
You had an open forum?
The other night, we spoke about this. You specifically denied Mr. Hodge's request to discuss replacement of the second district council person.
What concerns me is we have a new elected legislative body, and you two--
Read your council, read your charter, please.
You interrupted me again.
I'm awful sorry I interrupted you, Diane.
Okay, apology accepted. I'm deeply concerned that we have a legislative body that is okay. Two members are perfectly fine with Terry Moore, county executive, being able to pick.
She is not able to pick. You are giving her the obligation to pick because you won't pick.
I'm just doing what you said. I'm listening to what she said.
We have the power to make the selection, but you are choosing to defer it to the executive.
She anticipates, according to what she said, that it's going to be--
Don't worry about what she says. Go by your rules and regulations.
Are you done?
Yes, well, for the time being, I'm done.
Okay. She anticipates that it's going to be a two-to-two vote, so she will end up choosing, and you two are okay with that.
What would make you think she anticipates a two-to-two vote?
Wasn't that why she switched?
I don't know. I don't know why--
Well, we don't know.
She said she switched because it was the best interest of the citizens.
You just--
Cecil had to do what she did, and I believe her in her words.
Councilman, you just said, "I had to go and pay homage at court. I can't have the Queen come before us here and have a face-to-face conversation with her," and you're saying you were there and you don't even know why she switched?
She gave us the explanation. I know why she switched. It was in the benefit of Cecil County that she switched. Her party affiliation would become--
What does that mean?
I don't know. You take it for what you think it means.
I don't want to take it for what I think it means. I want to hear it from her.
Well, you had the opportunity, and you basically forewent that possible--
Well, you were there. You don't even know.
I most certainly do know. Read the newspaper.
Enlighten us.
Does anyone have a copy of the newspaper and speech?
I shouldn't have to read the newspaper. She should come to me directly. Why can't I have a face-to-face with the county executive?
You can't?
There's her entire speech in the paper.
I was just holding it in.
You can't. You can do it anytime you choose.
Okay, well, that's--
She has a teller's card. She has-- I'm not sure that you would be satisfied with her explanation of the--
Isn't part--
That's probably true.
Yeah. Count them in, Murphy. That wasn't the only comments that she's made relative to why she switched.
It doesn't matter if she switched. That is not our concern.
It matters to me. It matters to the public.
It certainly matters to the public.
What matters is that we filled it with vacancy, and we filled it with the most qualified person that lives in that district. Well, that's what matters, and the failure of our action will allow her to do what you want her to do.
Councilman Hodge, this is a crime change. The people were, a lot of people were-- Excuse me? A lot of people were paranoid, I'll say, of charter government because they felt that it was being set up so that one person could have all the power, and look what's happened. Now, Commissioner, Councilman Hodge, you had said that you didn't vote for charter. Did you vote for the charter board?
I did.
Yeah, vote for charter. Let's get that clear.
So what I'm hearing is that we want a written opinion from Norman on the charter. Is that what--
The title, can we read at least on that?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
I don't think it's necessary. We don't need to waste our money, the county's money, the taxpayers' money, on opinions that really are not that important when the charter is perfectly clear on the process or really on who the responsible party is, and that is the council. We are the responsible party, and we need to take action. We need to determine the process. And I'll just put it into a motion that I propose, that we send a press release out to all of the known media outlets in Cecil County, advertising the open position and asking for expressions of interest from any qualified citizen who lives or has lived in District 2 for more than six months to send their resume and expression of interest to the council for consideration.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
So there's a, seems like a reasonable request. The only problem is I don't have an attorney here to ask, a real attorney, that if I were to go along with this, I was being complicit in following through with the process that Miss Moore put in place. So I'll be going to the end of this.
Well, same here. I would like to know what the procedure is before we go ahead and put out any applications or anything like that. I, again, think it's a reasonable request to have opinion from council before we proceed it. I don't understand the law of the script, but--
There's a motion.
And let me point out also, Vicky, that this is the technicality that Miss Moore played in switching the party. This is the mess that she's created.
If I might speak for a second, I found the article or basically the explanation where the party changed. Please read it to the audience.
Excuse me, this is out of order.
This is what you asked for.
You're making it sound like that's the--
You wanted an explanation why she did what she did. It's right there in the paper.
I want to read some brag. I don't trust anything that's in there.
You just said that you base your opinions on what you read in the newspaper.
I was referring to that.
Oh, did not this newspaper, maybe another--
I call, someone called for the vote. There's a motion, a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Oh.
Motion fails. Next on the agenda is a proposed resolution, interim council procedures, Councilman Hodge.
Last week, we agreed to not select a president of this council, and I asked Vicky to prepare a resolution that basically formalizes the understanding that we will not have a president, an individual president, that collectively we will act to execute the duties of the president of the council and shall act to conduct the business of the council. That means that no individual person or councilman can take action without the collective action of the majority moving forward. And basically, it formalizes it and allows us to work together to make that decision and will allow, when we do take action on business, and we did take some action last week at our public session, and I anticipate we'll take some action on some of the county business in our next meeting on the 18th, but I believe that this resolution kind of formalizes what we agreed to, to move forward without precedent until our replacement member is appointed.
So we're moving forward without president? There is no president? Then collectively, we're all president?
No, now we're going to act collectively when there is no president. We're going to act collectively to execute the duties of the president. It's clearly spelled out in the resolution.
Yeah. So if we wanted to bring something and put it on the agenda, each one of us could put it on the agenda?
Absolutely.
That's, we're collectively acting as president?
No.
Individually, collectively. If we're all president, then we can--
We're not all, we're not all president. There is no president. We are collectively acting to execute the duties of president.
Okay.
I asked last Tuesday to introduce this as an introduction item. There's no alter in motive in this bill or resolution. It just kind of formalizes our understanding that we are acting without a formal president. And I guess I'll put this in a motion, that I'm introducing this resolution for consideration by the entire court for action at our next meeting.
There's a motion on the floor to introduce this resolution for consideration at the next council meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second. Any further discussion? Being a further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Councilman McCord, you were in favor.
Yes, I was.
Okay. Okay. Motion fails. Next, proposed discussion, internal auditor appointment, it'll move around.
Well, the option one, we could do an expression of interest. The in-house auditor would be called for specific tasks, but I would say that option two would be the way to go and put out a advertisement looking for a full-time in-house auditor in the scope of the description that we have approved. Does the scope of work justify the need for the full-time? Procedural tests help reduce costs with the external auditor, and certain procedural tests of the year in audit can be performed by the county auditor. The in-house auditor reports help confirm to the outside auditor that the county's internal controls are effective. That's about 20% of the duties. 40% is to identify risk assessment, and it's, risk assessment is the basis for developing an audit plan, usually two to three years in length, what should be included and what's-- Most of the audit time, 40%, is spent in areas that review costs, procedures, and functions. Part of the benefit is the benefit that processes are improved, wasteful functions questioned and eliminated or changed, and part is to ensure that backup processes exist. Fiscal aid on proposed bills, economic analysis, who's impacted, government business or others, research, specific questions from council members. Fourth, maintain skills through in-house training and attending meetings. Auditors should not be a part of the control approval process, but should be aware of the county's functions, citizens' concerns, employees' concerns, investigative complaints. Will result in more activity, but some will take a full time. Questions for the auditor. We have questions about the sheriff's department, community policing possibly related, how much, if we start a program like this, how much can we anticipate more we would have to spend, or how much money we anticipate would be saved in getting the community involved. Questions regarding justified cost between vehicles, so the current policy's full proof to monitor how much the vehicles are used, personally used for deputies, deputies outside of the county. of the county. Cecil County Public Schools, we had a lengthy discussion on the cell though, and further construction projects, additional oversight for the construction manager. DPW, cost justified for contracted services to redo plans with higher full-time employees. In the 10, I believe it's 10 or 11 Charter counties, all of them have in-house auditors, except for Talley and Dorchester, who have 30,000 in population each. Wyomacow closes 90,000, yes, they have an in-house auditor. And the in-house auditor last year for Wyomacow did an audit, postage audit report, shared fees and billing audit, the department correction audit, storage audit, risk management assessment audit, time and attendance consultation, 2011 annual report, purchase card audit, fuel system audit, telecommunications audit. So we're trying to outline that on the legislative side, we need to balance out the information, the power. You know, it's what you know, the information is going to help us make a balanced decision on what we're going to support. And I'd like to hear your feedback on that, if you would support.
Well, I guess I'll get started, I voted for this motion back when it was brought upon the old county commissioner form of government, I think it will be beneficial to the Council, I think we do need someone we can refer to for financial information, and I agree it's a separation of powers issue in my mind, so I would support putting it out there, or advertising, I think is what you were advocating.
I believe you have to do a budget amendment for this salary, for the position, if you have money in the salary, I just...
We just did a job description, I think is what we did previously.
You have to do a budget amendment.
Now, I thought there was an amendment for half, half a year?
No, we, no.
Many-day Council Manager and a...
No, that was, it was a separate budget amendment that was passed by the commissioners to allow half-year's salary benefits for this position.
I'm sorry.
But I believe that it's premature to hire this position. I think that if we have immediate questions about the Sheriff's Department, the schools, or anywhere else, we should ask the Executive Office to investigate and get answers for your questions, if you can't find out the answers on your own. We should reinstitute the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee and task them with looking into these questions that you may have. Or, I think that if they're complicated questions that need a lot of detailed information, then I would consider hiring a subject matter expert, expert consultant, that would know specific knowledge about specific matters that you may have questions on, rather than someone that is a jack-of-all-trades and knows a little bit about everything, and hardly anything about the rest. So I think it's something that we need to talk about in the future, as we move forward. I don't think that we're moving forward very fast, so I'm not a big fan of expanding positions or growing government, and until we get our act together and move this county forward, I'm not supporting additional positions hired by the Council.
So not only do you not support getting an opinion from an attorney, you think we can answer those questions ourselves?
No, I say you...
Big thing here, yeah, with the finding out the information, I can tell you, Mr. Feely, I went to many times, and he provided some really good insight that contradicted other sources. And if I didn't have that source, Mr. Feely, that's all, he reads statements, he knows where to look to get, to cut through and find real information. I'm not trained as an auditor, some things I can research on my own, but there's a reason why all these other Charter counties have in-house auditors.
And I didn't say that there won't be a purpose for it in the future date.
You feel that we can just go to the County Executive and trust the information that's coming out of her office, and that should be good enough?
Until such time as she's proven you and me wrong, I think that we should, I think that she does have a Director of Finance, and she has other people within that department that are capable of doing the financial analysis, and I certainly trust her judgment, and I trust her department, and I trust her staff to come up with the right answers. Now, if we, the Board, or the Council disagree, and then, at that point in time, we can go and look at arguments, but I don't want to hire somebody just to double-check, triple-check everything that it does. And I think it's the role of the Executive to answer your questions that you have about the other issues. We should, she has the staff, she has the employees at her disposal, and I think that if you have questions about any entity, we can ask them and see if she can get the answers for you.
It's my opinion, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that this independent auditor would basically inspect or oversee effective governance, cost-effective programs, and operational, organizational operation. Is that essentially what we're agreeing to?
Well...
An overseer of these programs.
No, there's more.
No, I'm just saying basically.
Well, one of the bigger items that I can also see effective, when bills are brought before us, in the General Assembly, there is the Legislative Services that do the fiscal note, and they research what kind of impact the legislation is going to have.
Okay, I will concede that to you, but what I'm saying is, I think that the internal auditor basically is almost a watchdog for the government.
Yes.
Who would choose this independent auditor? Because this auditor needs to be independent, if, who would you have choose this person?
That would be the Council.
I would suggest to you that if we needed an independent auditor in this government, it should be chosen or basically suggested by the Executive, and basically, then we would create an Audit Committee, which then independently would position this auditor. If the Council chooses it, I can assure you that the auditor responds to the Council and to no one else.
So you wouldn't have our County Executive make the choice?
I would most certainly do that, and if she didn't do an effective job, I'd make sure she was dismissed, her and the auditor. Now, I'll ask just a number of pointed questions, and you might answer them individually. You've already specified what this independent auditor would do, and you've specified you think his details would be. What would happen if we chose to do nothing at this particular point in time?
We would not be prepared when things were brought before us, we would not be proactive in ways that we could save money.
So really what you want is your own independent auditor for yourself, you don't want someone who is effectively going to evaluate the in-place procedures, now you want someone to consult with the Council specifically.
No, they can also review the in-place and in-house...
Then they would not be independent, I'm suggesting. An independent person has no dog in his fight, they just look at what's happening and see if it works or doesn't, and make suggestions as how it could be improved or eliminated. Now...
I got opinions from, oh, one of the people I went to was Winston Robinson, Ms. Moore's choice for Finance Director, and he absolutely endorses this, and us having it on our side or response for government.
Well, once again, maybe I don't understand, but I think that this person is supposed to function, to be a watchdog over the way that the government is operating. I think that what you want is basically someone to consult with you, or the Council as a whole, in conflict or in opposition to the Executive.
No, if you were listening, there's a lot more responsibilities that this independent...
And how much would this person cost, I mean, what is her respective salary for this person?
From memory, it seemed like it was 70 or 80,000 a year.
I think it was a total of approximately $100,000 a year with all benefits, including salary and benefits.
Are benefits not money?
I, we haven't done much as a Council, at this rate, I don't see us doing much going forward. And again, I have to say that this is just premature for us to be discussing adding a new position, and when we have the ability. Now, I have to say, as a county commissioner, I was able to use my professional resources to get a lot of answers that I needed, to make intelligent decisions as a county commissioner. I know several CPAs, I know several business owners that have employees and take care of business, and I've used them as resources to help me figure out how to make good choices as a commissioner. And I would encourage you to develop those relationships too, so that we don't have to have a $100,000 personal payroll to give us advice.
Councilman Hodge, are those people familiar with the cost of our county government? How could they be familiar, how could they access quickly, how would they have access? We're losing our Treasurer, he had access, he was elected by the people. You're putting into our County Executive's hands, once again, full power of finance discernment, financial discernment.
Okay, again, for the record, I fully trust the judgment of our Executive, I believe that the staff that work with the County Executive will do a good job of representing the people and providing the information that we need to make good, sound decisions. And I don't see the need at this time, and I'm reserving the right to change my mind, I'm reserving the right to change my mind about this issue, but I believe that I would give the benefit of the doubt to the Executive branch to act intelligently and professionally and accurately, to provide to us the decisions that we need to make good, sound decisions.
I don't think you have a full understanding of what Charter is meant to be, unless you had an understanding of what you wanted it to be.
And Terry, we trust, is that what you're...
That's what it sounds like.
Okay, I believe that there's no need for a vote, I think we discussed this sufficiently.
Oh, no, I want to vote.
Okay, go ahead.
Stay your nose.
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we put out advertisement for the in-house auditor.
There's a motion on the floor to advertise for an in-house auditor, is there a second?
Second.
I have a first and a second, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion fails. Next on your agenda is the expression of interest for legal services, you have a copy of the notice for the paper, you're seeking authority to go ahead and advertise that. Does everyone have a chance to review it, do you have anything else to add?